... prayer and I'll leave some place. That's all for it. Thank you to your heavenly Father, who is good day, blessed and alive. Thank you for all that you give us, your heavenly Father. Your heavenly Father be with you soon, making decisions, and let us make the best decisions, in your favor, to take your decision. Thank you for all that you do, watch over our family, friends, watch over the city decision, watch over our soldiers, our hard times. Bless each and every one, your heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that you do for us, postal office. Thank you for the plan of salvation. Amen. Pull up my flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, this one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, please check in. Press confirm. Folks, if you haven't spoken with us before, we allow three minutes for each speaker. If you have issues, it'll take longer. Commissioners can add you to the agenda during the workshop, but we don't have that available tonight, so we please ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. First speaker is Jim Slusher.
I'm glad.
You're welcome to the floor, Jim.
First of all, I want to say I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Colmeyer, personal friend and a true professional in my heart. Is the county mayor still supplying deer meat to the senior citizen center?
Never have. The Hunters for the Hungry Program supplied the deer meat through you.
Through you. The selling of deer meat is an insult to the city, to the citizens, recipients, donors, and consumers of meals on wheels and any others that may have been charged for meals containing deer meat. It is also an insult to the citizens and taxpayers to even consider paving the senior parking lot or make other donations to an organization that has treated Mrs. Murphy as she has been treated. Who's next? Permanent expulsion for talking to the mayor? Come on. Public money for self-declared private organization? Come on. What happened to the priority of paving public roads and addressing the critical needs of the county's citizens? Where is the justice or rationale for this? Explain to the citizens of White Oak or other deprived areas of the county this situation. Turn the organization, and I'm talking about the senior citizens, back to Ethera and let them deal with it. I thought the full-time county employees commissioners abolished discretionary funds. What is the status of black mold remediation at EMS Angelico? I haven't heard another word about it. Have EMS personnel become contaminated due to this hazardous condition? Are sick and impaired clients compromised? I can smell it now, litigation, that is. Take care of this problem now or move aside.
Two minutes.
There are... Now, wait a minute, Mr. Mayor.
I'm just giving you two minutes.
Are you going to do that to everybody?
Yes, sir.
That's interruptive. I've got three minutes.
Yes, sir, you do.
Respect me like I deserve. There are those that can.
You deserve to.
No, you don't. What happened to the railroad spur boondoggle?
You're done, Mr. Slusher.
When is the audit committee going to be?
You're done, Mr. Slusher.
I'm done.
Have a seat.
God bless America.
Ray Stroud.
I'm impressed. God bless America. Mayor, board trustees, I'm new here. I've worked down at the senior center under four different directors. It's a real simple operation. You have Butch that handles the front end, you have Ella that handles the back end. In the four years that I've been there, I haven't seen any problems under any of the directors that were there. They each have their own style, but they accomplish the task at hand. As for the selling of deer meat, we don't sell deer meat. There are donations that are given down there, and whether the county or somebody else supplies deer meat, nothing wrong with it. Nothing at all. The meals that are prepared, we've had rave reviews from everybody that's down there. On occasion, and I mean rare occasion, in the four years that I've been there, maybe we've had four or five problems with a meal, but nothing, and I mean nothing, that would say the meal is a bad meal. And in those four or five years that I've been here, all the meals go out, all the people and we cook mainly, our main function is meals on wheels. Donations by anybody else for meals or anything that comes out down there, no matter what the food is, that's acceptable. And I think if you look at the books themselves, it's a not-for-profit organization, and I think we're coming up at a zero balance at the end of the year. We do our best to keep everything under control down there and keep our costs down. That's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Lurley Murphy.
I am in no way for paving the parking lot at the senior center. I am in no way against the Campbell County Senior Citizen Center. We desperately need a qualified director and staff in charge of operating the senior center with the best interest of all Campbell County seniors. Mr. Colmeyer, all I want you to do is to step up and be our director. For the past three years, you have let Pat Orta, Charlotte Cabrera, and Delight Carlson run the center, and that is why we are here tonight with all these problems. You need to tell the staff, I am the director and I intend, I am the director and instead of me letting you all tell me how to run the center, I am going to direct. That's what a director is supposed to do, is direct, and for three years, you have not done your job. So tell these three women, hey, you know what? I am sure I can do a better job than what you all have done, so please, Mr. Colmeyer, go for it and show us you can direct. God bless you, Mr. Colmeyer. Thank you.
James Bolt. Jim Bolt.
He's back. I just want to speak for this background. I'll say I appreciate the commission decision and I appreciate the work that they've done for us here, and I will make them fire tonight, but clear cutting's going on on Highway 9. You know, Dr. Rizzi's going up the highway now, starting clear cutting today, that it may be some lining going on in the other area, hundreds of miles. Today needs to be no time. So appreciate it, so the commission, I appreciate, I appreciate our sanitation department decision, having, having everybody out there, I hope both of them, I really appreciate that, I appreciate the mission working on that.
I'm not here to question the meals at the senior center. They're fine. Deer meat situation, don't know anything about it, don't care. Situation of trying to pave that parking lot, absolutely no way that should happen. Now, I know that everybody was handed the, uh, these...
Bylaws.
The bylaws from the senior center. I'm here to tell you that those bylaws themselves are illegal. Two years ago, when I started fighting them to follow their bylaws, I was told then that, well, they didn't have to do that. And if you will go back two years ago to the bylaws that they had in place at that time, you will see that the senior citizens of that, you know, the senior citizen place, that they are supposed to vote for any changes to the bylaws. Those changes that are in there from that period of time, the senior citizens themselves never voted on, and the bylaws as they currently stand says that the members of the board can change that. Well, they gave themselves the authority to change it, and so when you look at this, you're going to think that, oh, well, they've got that right. Well, I'm here to tell you, they don't. They changed that themselves over, right at two years ago.
Two minutes.
And then they also started extending the timeframe they could be on the board. They were supposed to only be on the board for two years rotate off. That was another thing that we were trying to fight there. You're supposed to be rotating off, and they weren't. The first iteration of the changes that they made, they gave themselves four years instead of two. Once again, the membership did not vote for that. That was voted on by the board members themselves because they gave themselves that right. And then they turned around and they later changed it to six years.
Ten seconds.
And so, no, what you're looking at, that's not legal.
Good evening, Mayor Morton and Commissioners. My name is Pat Orta, and I have, I'm a relatively new transplant to Campbell County. I have been down here since approximately 2010. In 2012 or so, I, after going to the center, I was asked if I would consider accepting a part-time position at the center. I am a registered nurse, bachelor's degree in business administration, and I gladly accepted the position. The things that I was running into at the center, and the center has been incorporated since 1988, the bylaws, there were five, six, well, maybe, let's say, two or three different areas of bylaws. None of them were dated. None of them had been reviewed. So I asked, and I was not a member of the board at the time, and I said, we need to do something about this. We need to check, have it so that everybody's on the same page. There were no policies and procedures, and we are in the process of writing policies and procedures. What happens if somebody falls? What do you do? Somebody gets sick, do you just throw them in a car and take them? Do you call 911? These were important things that we needed to iron out at the senior center, and we are in process of doing that. As far as the meals on wheels, everybody, we have a waiting list for meals on wheels. Unfortunately, we have a limited area that we can deliver to, but at least two or three times a week, we receive referrals or calls for someone who wants, who are begging for the meals to be delivered in an area further out than what we can do. Somebody that lives out past Big O's, somebody that lives up in Vasper, an area that's too far away for our limited budget, our limited funding that we can do. Meals on Wheels funding is partially through La Follette Medical Foundation. We do not get everything that it costs us to prepare these meals for these 40 to 50 people a day. Our meals on wheels go out the same days that we have school, Monday through Friday. If it's a holiday, we do not deliver meals on wheels. If there's a school, a weather emergency, we do not deliver meals on wheels.
Two minutes.
So we are doing a service to our elderly community, and as Ray, who is a volunteer chef, has said, we have no complaints. The elections of the board members have been changed and with, going with what the membership had, had wanted, had asked for, and it's strange to me that there's only three or four people who are wanting, who are, who are saying that things are not right, but everybody else is happy with it.
Ten seconds.
And I have invited anyone who would like to see the, the running of, and the paperwork for the center, come on down. We're there until 2 o'clock every afternoon. I'll be happy to show it to you.
Delight Carlson.
One thing I want to tell you, the senior center was really never ran by Ethera. Ethera rented our kitchen out at one time. Ethera rented our kitchen out at one time. The meals weren't prepared at our place, and they weren't too good a meals, and that's when we changed over, I believe in 2007, and started making our own. The facts that these people are saying are really not true. We do not charge for the meals on wheels. Our grant, which is from La Follette Medical Foundation, had wanted us to charge for the meals, but we found that it didn't work. The people don't have any money. We're taking care of the poor. We're taking care of a lot of people in the center, too, that do not have money. We have a donation box in the center, in the kitchen, for when you have a meal, if you have some money, you put your money in there. If you don't have money, you just don't tell us, you just eat. Our financial ledgers are audited every month by a member and yearly by McGee's Accounting Firm. We invite you in at any time to go over them with us. Certain people have been asserting that we are not appropriating our funds right. This is an insult, and I take it personally. They have been mentioning Charlotte Cabrera. Charlotte is one of our most important assets. She teaches line dancing on Tuesdays and Thursdays. On Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, she teaches Silver Sneakers. These people who are complaining about her...
Two minutes.
Have never done anything at our center. They've never done anything for us. They have come to music on Thursdays and Saturdays only. Mayor Morton, you appoint the director, not these people. Butch Colmeyer is a very respected and liked member of this community. He is a very good director. He tells us what to do, and we do it. You made a very good choice in picking him. Mayor Morton and you Commissioners, this is harassment now. How long are we going to put up with this? How long are you going to let it go on? Mayor Baird put a stop to it.
Ten seconds.
It's up.
There's certainly an X on our sign. That's me. I was...
Grace has the microphone, buddy.
I'm the van driver. I deliver the meals to the people, the elderly people that are homebound. We have delicious meals. We've got an excellent director. He tells us what to do. We don't tell him what to do. And I think the people that are trying to harm us, there's something wrong, because there's nothing wrong at our center. We had no problems until these problems came up. We were all just fine. We work good together. We love each other. We're like a family. And these people that we take meals to, sometimes that meal is the only meal they have. I have one lady sitting on her couch with her fork and spoon, waiting for me to get there because she says that's the only food she has during the day, and there's many of them like that. And I enjoy taking the meals to them, and they enjoy me because they're all, they're elderly, older than I am, and I enjoy what I do, and the center's a wonderful place to work.
Charles McDaniel.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm speaking from a kind of a personal standpoint. I've been going to the senior citizen center now for almost three years, active in the Silver Sneakers, and periodically I have a meal at the center. This center, I went through a rough health patch. The people at the center supported me, gave me courage, prayed for me, and I recovered. And I want to thank Butch, Pat, and especially Charlotte for helping me get through what I've been through. As far as I know, and I've been going there regularly, I've been attending their board meetings, as far as I know, I don't see any irregularities. They run a very smooth operation, and I'm very thankful to have it in Campbell County. Thank you.
Mr. Hale, I don't have you on the list, sorry.
There's an X, there's an X there.
There isn't, so. All right, Commissioners, approval of previous meeting minutes, vote number four. Have a motion by Oric. There, your second. Second by Goins. Any discussion on meeting minutes? Please vote yes or no and press confirm. Does anyone wish to change the vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed. We had still no noted republic applications this week.
A motion to approve the no republic renewals.
Have a motion to approve renewals, there, your second. Any discussion on renewal? Seeing none, please vote yes or no. Press confirm. Does anyone wish to change the vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes. Any new application?
Motion to approve the new application, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve the new application.
Second.
Have a second. Motion by Oric, second by Goins. Any discussion? Please vote yes or no. Fisher and Nance? All right. Does anyone wish to change their vote?
We voted yes.
Okay. Please vote yes or no. Press confirm.
Just announce the vote.
Okay, we need to take the vote for the new application. Okay. Okay. All votes are in. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. All right, motion passed, 15 yes. Committee reports and minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the committee reports and minutes that we have.
Motion by Oric, there, your second.
And the handout that Peggy has sent us.
Second by Bruce. This concludes the handout that came today. Any discussion? Commissioner Davis?
There's one error. It says that Ralph Davis made a motion for Scott Stanfield, but it needs to be reversed. Scott made the motion for me.
With the correction?
I accept his motion, change the correction, that's fine with Ralph.
Any other corrections, comments, discussion? Seeing none, please vote yes or no. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed. Budget amendments and other funding resolutions, I will, I do think, I'll make this comment, I do think our senior center provides a very important function for us in light of the paving that we have to do across the county and the condition of the parking lot now, I do think it's prudent consideration to consider delaying paving of the parking lot this time.
Is that one of the resolutions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, it's not one of the funding resolutions, but I just wanted to put that on the record before we approved expenditures tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So you're waiting on a motion.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, it's just the items in the handout.
Is it what?
Just the items in the handout.
That's correct.
Yeah. I think the mayor's actually asking if we want to rescind the action for the parking lot at the senior citizens.
Before we went to expenditures tonight, I just wanted that on the record.
Okay.
So. But we are here to approve budget amendments and other funding resolutions. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 11-1 through 11-8, and that's, that we have at hand.
Have a motion for 11-1, 11-8 approval, there, your second. Second by Bruce. Discussion?
Just a moment, please.
Mr. Jennings, you have the floor.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not...
It's only the ones we approved in the budget finance game.
Mr. Bruce? Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no. Mr. Davis, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes.
Mr. Mayor, this time, I must object to Mr. Bruce. As you know, I've always contended that he has a direct conflict of matters.
So noted.
I object to him voting.
Item number eight, reports from county officials, departments.
Motion to approve the county reports and from other offices, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Oric, second by Ayers. Discussion? Or second by Nance. Please vote yes or no. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes. Other matters, I had the soccer field project that you... Other matters, I had the soccer field project that you, the committee heard tonight on there for consideration. I think the committee, Commissioner Kits, did we table that in the committee?
No, sir, we tabled the discussion for the turf.
For the turf, okay.
Football field.
Okay, so for the soccer field, we have the information presented to committee and at workshop last week. What's the pleasure, Commissioner?
I've got a question.
Commissioner Goins?
I'll be fine. Where are you getting this money coming from?
Capital outlay funds is what we discussed in the committee, unless there's a suggestion otherwise. I don't think we legally have a whole lot of resources, but they can go for that. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes, has the school board taken up consideration that, you know, if we build this one, what we're going to do for Jellicoe?
That's, that's an excellent point. Commissioner Davis?
It was brought up and Jellicoe was mentioned about in the future. But if, well, to me, and I've got another question, if we give this to the school department, does that increase their maintenance of effort?
Not out of capital outlay.
Yeah, motion needs to be made to not increase.
Mr. Marlowe?
Took up the soccer field issue and they voted to provide $9,000, but it's going to be a donation to the Campbell County High School Soccer Fund. And in that realm, you all would do the same thing if you take this up. It would not go to the Board of Education centralized accounting. It would go to the CCHS Soccer Fund and it would have no impact on maintenance of effort.
So this is the same character of the money that we set aside for road building and capital outlay that did not initiate a future requirement for maintenance of effort?
Well, my, the biggest problem I have is what about the other schools? I mean, if we're going to commit to one, aren't we kind of setting ourselves up to where we have to supply the same amount of money to the other schools?
I don't think, may I, Chairman, I don't think the other, Jellicoe High School has a soccer team. And the team and the boosters got together and got a law that's done in kind.
I agree.
But they did testify tonight that they have invited Jellicoe athletes and delayed practice time so they could come over the mountain, understanding that the best solution is a facility on the other side. Commissioner Bruce?
I wanted to gentleman, I asked that question and he stated that they had got to took Jellicoe High School and asked these rules over there, like, talk to them, tell them, tell them, tell them, tell them, and he said they did late practice, a later time to get, a later time to go here. And if they don't, rather than correct, they thought the similar were going to come, a later time to, and it just didn't.
Well, I appreciate that. I just think that maybe they don't need it for soccer, but that we're obligating the other schools the same amount. If we have that capital outlay instead of roads, you know. Go ahead.
Any other discussion? What's the pleasure, Commissioner? I'll entertain a motion.
And the final total, Mayor, will be $8,678.
Have a motion for $8,600. How much?
$8,678 is the balance left.
Motion by Kidd, second by Davis. Just point of clarity, Mr. Marlowe, any idea where that puts our balance, capital outlay?
Mayor, what we'll have to do, at least, I'll defer to Joe to make sure this is correct. The action of the commission tonight, we don't presently have money appropriated, obviously, for a soccer field. We do have some residual uncommitted capital outlay monies from what I will call the undesigned balance of the capital outlay fund. There's probably about $15,000 to $20,000 in that. You know, I talked to you a couple of months ago, as you go through the cycle, you have the POs write off and blah, 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 blah. So there is enough money to cover your $9,000 adventure, but we need an appropriation for that. So I told the Board of Education the same thing when they took their action. It would still have to have a budget amendment be approved to solidify this. So just taking this action tonight would be step number one. Next month, you still have to do the budget amendment formal, okay?
Any other discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Reason I support this is when I went to the school board to ask them to pay half of the money for White Oak Schools caution lots, they done it with any hesitation. So I for they get my vote because I'm returning the favor that they did for White Oak. I'm, we're all one county and I understand Mr., his opinion, but I think we need to help when we can.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bruce? So noted.
Oh, yeah, I object, Mayor.
Just wanted to make sure you had time to get it on the record, Cliff.
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas?
Is the school board, Johnny, are they going to furnish those kids transportation that most of participate in soccer by them becoming from Jellicoe to Campbell County High School?
Mr. Chairman, can the county commission, can they ask tonight for the school board to do that for those individuals?
Why not? They come and have.
That's what I'm saying, I'm trying to, trying to help it along. I think they should. I think we need to add that into that, that they have some kind of transportation set aside for those individuals from Jellicoe.
You can ask, but once you've appropriated, it's theirs to manage, but I think they would do their best. I think you'd get an honest effort.
I think so. And I can't speak for the school board, but I believe that they would. Soccer's one of the most growing sports around. My son's grown up in it and I wished it had happened 20 years ago.
Well, just in the realm of things for young people to do, we hosted the fishing tournament for the high school age fishermen and women at Loness Young Park this weekend. Campbell County High School plays first and Jellicoe High School had one fisherman and he took the big fish. So the two biggest prizes went to our local programs, both Campbell County High School, Jellicoe High School. And I believe this body and I believe our school board will continue to work, make sure that we've got equity for everybody on both sides of the mountain. Along that, I think for consideration for budget next year, if that school budget doesn't support another driver's ed car, I think we should look at it as a county commission and figure out a way to make sure that we've got two high schools each with a driver's ed car. But that's, and other people have talked about that, just to make sure we've got equity for both sides of the mountain. So I think there's good faith on school board and this commission to continue forward that way.
Mayor, I certainly don't sound like I'm against the soccer field. I just like the question, you know, where's the money?
Valid question, valid question. But those are revenue generating types of investments. Thirty-eight boats went in at the park the day before and no doubt, three quarters of them were from here, but we had teams from North Carolina, Kentucky, Georgia, and Alabama here. So it's, it's a draw and you'll start to see a return on that investment. Any other discussion? Mr. Welton?
Mr. Marlowe, you said we have around $17,000, you thought?
$15,000 to $20,000.
In, I know you can't give me an answer, but would that put us too low going on to the end of our year?
No.
You don't think it would?
No. It's truly residual money in that particular fund. Every year, you reappropriate 100% of your resources and the goal is to get to zero and it's just the residual of several years of operations of write offs that that's all we've got left. Anything else has already been appropriated.
Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes. For the county mayor portion, I want to invite everybody here to come back tomorrow night at 6 o'clock for the unveiling of the youth art picture in the lobby of the courtrooms next door. Got a beautiful product over there and tomorrow night, we'll have a reception and the kids that produce that art in our county will cut a ribbon on it and celebrate something special that they've done.
Mr. Moore, don't we have some, don't we have some meetings?
We do have committee meetings. I have checked the schedule. We have committee meetings starting at 5:00, so Commissioners that are here, certainly for those, all Commissioners are invited, the public's invited. Waterline Extension. Industrial Committee.
Is that the only two, Mayor?
Commissioner Jennings?
Is that the only two?
It's three. Communications, industrial, and waterline. So we will go do the unveiling and then probably still have one left. We'll have to carry forward on that. I have, just for things industrial for that agenda, we have had someone accept to be the chair, Industrial Development Board, and we have a tax increment financing opportunity that we need to discuss. So if you put that on the agenda. Okay, we, we took bids on building out the house in Jellicoe for the ambulance service. Bruce, you want to give an update?
We went by there today, they took tree lines out, there's a lot of backside that we kind of lean over. They removed all the dirt and soil from the backside, started doing the construction of the garage. Probably got the footers dug and framed in about this evening, they'll start more concrete stuff tomorrow. And we put the gravel down the driveway, we're going to move all the dirt and stuff back there to fix the driveway. Got over half of the inside of the tiny stuff, still a lot of wood more in there and everything flew pretty much real timeline, the way it's supposed to be going, it's looking good over there.
Jeff, we're on course for that. We have no other financial measures to take, right?
No, we're done.
Okay, excellent. Any questions for Bruce about progress in the ambulance service? And for the record, there's never been a mobile problem in Jellicoe Station. We are working a, an update in Station 1 and we'll file it. Discussion?
I think they're talking actually about the scheduling for tomorrow night. Mr. Jennings, didn't you call for a Ways and Means Committee meeting for the Cherry Arts Building?
Well, we probably should.
It's, it's down for 7:15 tomorrow night.
That's why I asked, I thought it was.
She was going through records and that's.
Okay, Ways and Means at 7:15?
Ways and Means at 7:15, about, I think that's what was on the agenda was that. Let me read them off, you don't read them off, Peggy.
He's four, I know that.
At 5:00 is the waterline committee meeting. At 6:00 is the elk art unveiling. At 6:15 is the communication committee. At 6:30, the industrial committee, and at 7:15, the Ways and Means.
Thank you.
I thought that was correct, but.
Mr. Goins?
Communication, is that a TV, a cable TV?
Bids to that communication.
Can I ask you something? How many years contract have they got?
I don't know.
Somebody should know.
Contracts for operating in.
Yeah, in the county, yeah.
Any idea, Mr. Coe?
Franchise contract changed a couple of years ago. It's set at 20 years now.
Twenty years?
If I'm not mistaken, it's 10 or 20. It used to be at five and the state changed it. They don't have to come back before us on any franchises for, and they did that across the state, cities and counties.
Well, that's what I was going to ask them, how many houses they tied on these years, people got cable, but my way, there were a lot of people wanting, can't get it.
You know, we asked Comcast up here and I guess it was back six months ago and the only one showed up was AT&amp;T U-verse. And I think we need, I think I still sit on that committee once we elect the chairman. I think we need to do that again, Mr. Goins.
I think it'd be a good idea for that committee to offer that invitation. They've got a, they've got a new leadership team in the area that's, they showed up at several community events. I think they were at the Ford Store, I think they had one rep, then they had about five people attend the Chamber of Pig rally.
Comcast.
Comcast.
Mayor, has anybody thought about getting hold a charter?
Russell Burr.
Competition makes you good business.
Could be. That committee can take that on. I think that's a good consideration. We had a discussion about policy for E6s and county buildings. Joe, find any clarity on that? There are, there are county governments and city governments that are adopting policies. So something we should evaluate, I guess, as we go forward. So we're not in violation of anything. Mr. Brannan was here from the chamber with his update at workshop, didn't have a lot of questions, so I didn't ask him back tonight. I'd certainly take any issues that you might have for the chamber back to that board. Committee for Historical Survey Grant, Commissioner Nance said she would serve on that committee and I wanted to ask. Yes, I want to ask the fifth district commissioners if they would serve as well. I'll entertain a motion to designate those individuals. Sue Ralph.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, Ms. Nance.
I have a motion by orick, second by Jennings.
Mr. Douglas and Mr. Ralph.
All right, please vote yes or no. Appointing them to the Historical Survey Grant Committee. Press confirm. Rusty, hit your confirm button. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Thank you all for serving on that. It's about a 30-day window. The Development District put that request for proposal out and there were a couple of responses and so we'll be asking you to evaluate the responses and what they think that they can provide. There were a couple that went out in neighboring communities where they didn't get exactly what they wanted, so they rebid. I don't think that's the case for us, but the Development District should have that package together in the next week or so for you to look at, just to make sure that we wind up with a good inventory of historical assets and a good status of where they stand in their physical estate, so. How much repair they would need and those sorts of things. I have one item, I'm going to ask that you entertain suspending the rules for consideration of a potential purchase to support the Adam Holland Walden Mountain Water Project. We have an acquisition that it requires, so. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rule. Motion by Bruce, second by Nance. Any discussion?
Clarify that, of course, Mayor, if you may.
How many houses are we going to sell?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There, there are between 17 and 23 homes there. There, there are 17 full-time and 23 total. There's six part-time residents up there, is my understanding. Just for clarity, that water project to reach all those homes requires two lift stations. We've had one site that the engineers say is going to need to be developed into a lift station on the upper half, the lower half, we could not get it donated. And we require, it'll require purchase out of the grant dollars, the OSM grant dollars to do. the OSM grant dollars to do that. Any other discussion on suspending the rules to consider that? Please vote yes or no, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. 14 yes, motion passed. We have a resident that donated enough space to accommodate the uppermost lift station. It's about 100, it's less than 50 feet by 50 feet that they have, but the project is stopped at the bottom of the mountain. If we don't acquire the landowner that has the site that the engineer says we need, we've negotiated a price of $7,000. This body is required to hear purchases over $5,000, and so...
How big a piece of property is it, Mayor?
It's about 50 by 50, but you don't get the water project for that.
Is this person actually going to receive water on this project?
They're not, they're not going to tap. Right now, that's not their plan.
Can I say something?
Mr. Goins?
Well, we paid them, they should be glad to get the water.
They don't live there.
We gave the money for the tank and all. Before, we paid over $100,000 for a tank above.
Yes.
Same place you're talking about. I mean, to be getting water from that.
Do you know who owns that property?
I'll have to get the name for you.
Mr. Chairman, are there another location that they can use, or is that the only one?
At that level, that's the property owner that owns the land producing to that lift
Is that the only alternative site that...
At that level, they own all the property that facilitates that lift station.
Both of them? Are you talking about both lift stations?
The uppermost lift station is donated by a resident, full-time resident, that absolutely will tap the water.
Most water?
Right. But the other is just agricultural property down near Stinkin' Creek. But they own the whole strip along that low ground.
And the $7,000?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Give us a clear D to it.
That's intended. But we can't really enter into an agreement unless it passes this body, so... Joe, any counsel on how you'd structure that?
I did take a look at the title of the property, and I didn't see anything that indicated a problem. Of course, before there would be a public knowledge, we would do a full title search on it, but we didn't see anything that appeared to be a problem.
Commissioner Weld?
This is to be, this is to be paid with the grant?
The OSM grant, zero match.
Where's it going to say?
Mayor, for the record, the grant will not provide for the purchase of the land. We have to take it from our matching share of $120,000.
What will...
Mr. Oryx?
What will that do to us on a project? Do you have any idea, Jeff?
No, we're still at the infancy of getting it started, and the project, I can't remember the exact figures in my mind, but we thought initially that with the $120,000, as the Mayor said a second ago, there are no requirements to provide a match with OSM projects, but we committed to provide a match to give us the better opportunity to get the fund, you know. According to what Bob Campbell, or Bob Colvin has said, he thought the estimate that we had was close, and $7,000, you know, may change it some a little in one way or the other. We just don't know yet, Rusty. It's all in estimates just yet. We, I don't think that, as the Mayor said a second ago, you're stuck, you're at the point of kickoff, and if you don't do this, you're not going to go any further to see how you're going to come in. So you may end up with a property and not end up with a project, but no way to predict that.
Mayor, I certainly want to make, when you have that time, if I can do this, I want the name of the property owner made public in this situation. If he don't care anymore about his neighbors and that, and it may be a good friend of mine, but I want to make it part of the record.
We can provide that.
They should donate it.
I'm pretty sure that that property owner that we're talking about, and I don't really know what his name is, but I'm pretty sure he owns on both sides of that road. I really don't know what the man's name is that owns that property that we're talking about, but I think I'm right, that he owns on both sides of the road before you turn up the mountain. And that's where that, that's where that pumping station, I guess, has to go.
Is it clear property, Carl, or is it...
It's a bottom, it's bottom land.
Bottom land? County don't have enough right-of-way to set it on the right-of-way?
I don't know how much right-of-way the county...
Well, I mean, it's 50 by 50 piece of property, the pumping stations. I'm sure they've got to have a boundary, but...
They can dig this man up, they go up there.
Just make sure if he ever hooks on, we charge him a $7,000 tax.
I think the individual is in assisted living or nursing home situation, and I think they're paying bill, is what I think.
But if it takes that, Mayor, I'd like to, if there ain't no other alternative, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and buy that piece of property till those people can get water up there. They desperately need it.
I'll second. Motion? I have a second by Davis. Any other discussion?
When's the starting date on the project, Mayor? Do you have any...
Soon as we get to ground, we can go.
We still got to go through the bid process.
Bid process still got to be ran through, but the property's going to be purchased prior to the starting.
That's correct.
Otherwise, you won't have access, so... Any other discussion?
If the project fails, do we have to buy the property, or he releases from the purchase of it?
Joe, could we not structure a purchase agreement contingent on...
We can.
On a complete project, funded project?
We can do a contract, and in the event that that issue is not met, and we're not going to, as soon as they will...
Mr. Oryx?
Mayor, can I speak to this one?
Go ahead.
I will tomorrow. I will go up there and check that and see if there's any other place that that pumping station can be put down there on somebody else's property.
Mr. Davis?
How do we come up with the $7,000? Who negotiated that price?
We asked the engineer that had decided the two lift stations. He'd been in discussion with all the property owners there to include this one, but...
Is that Mr. Campbell?
Yes, it is. Bob Colvin went and talked to him.
Do we need to revise our motion as far as buying the property if, with the speculation as, if we don't do the project, we don't have to buy the land, or...
We...
Or is that have to be done in the motion?
I would think that would be an appropriate motion, such that you would have discretion in signing the contract and then some negotiation, and if it's in the end, the project, I'm going to agree, we have no obligation to bother.
Suitable to amend your motion, Carl? Would you accept amending the motion to reflect that?
Yeah.
And the second?
I'll second.
Okay.
And one other thing I might, if I grant, Commissioner Davis, we had discussed, then your only other choice, if you have to have this piece of property, would be to file a negotiation. So you could negotiate, or you could buy it soon.
Well, we weren't going to negotiate, we just didn't want to buy the property, and then the project filed through, and we spent $7,000. We just want him to, if we don't do the project, you don't have to buy the land.
One more thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is the plans already, are already grown up for the pumping stations?
Yes, sir.
Who's got a copy of that, so I can get a...
Robert Campbell will have that.
Can I get one?
Sure.
Can I make sure where the...
Has the utilities done approved the scope of the work, Mayor?
The Fala Utilities looked at a couple of different designs, and the first that we looked at was this one, by bringing it off the main line along Stinkin' Creek Road.
On this end of this piece of property for the, for the lift station, for the pumping station, is, is it negotiable with them? I mean, I work for them, but I don't work in that department, but is it negotiable with them for another location, or is that the only location that's suitable for that state?
We coordinated with them, and this is the route that it's, it's most cost-effective route.
Kind of a twin rock and a hard place, aren't they?
Well, we looked at, the second option was to drill a well atop the mountain to hold water, purify, with its own purification system on top of the mountain, and we, you know, you just won't hit enough water from up there, and that's why the residents are in the dearth of water that they're in. The wells just go dry four or five days, four or five months. You can run dry up there, and the utilities has no better likelihood of hitting water than a private resident does up there, so...
I have actually one more thing. This is the first time I ever hear them people buying a place for the pump station. I hope most people glad to give it.
I agree, I agree.
To get one.
In most of the rest of the community, we are talking about a 20% match for CDBG, and this is not really a match scenario. In my mind, you know, when you talk less than $10,000 for 23 rooftops to get access to water, I think there's some value there that you can't walk past.
The motion is to approve the purchase if we go further with the project?
Conditional, and if the project fails, then the sale's nullified.
Could there also be a clause in that motion that says if there's another adequate piece of property, that we'll purchase it instead of this one? Or work out an agreement where we don't have to purchase it? I don't want to prove it tonight, and then we've tied our hands. I know we've not, as long as we stop the project. But if there's another way out, that somebody else will donate the land, and I'm like with, since I've sat on commission, they've always pretty much donated.
I've never seen anybody show...
The sites for, and we've named them. I think they've named the sites after that landowner.
Mr. Bruce?
Tap fee, too, now. Free tap.
Is it all residents, did you not say that all residents of Bill want to know that we're going to put up the park?
Yes. I mean, you can't handcuff them right now. You got to take the contracts to them when the water is available, and they got it signed, but they are committed. Mr. Gibson has family there.
Whoever owns the piece of property, it's a large tract of property. It's not even a residential area. Okay? It's one of two people. I don't know who the second one could be, but I was, I'm under the impression the guy lives in Florida with the property for the proposed site.
With him behind him, touching him.
Knoxville. It's in Knoxville.
I think they've talked with him in Knoxville.
Okay.
It was closer to their offices, that's why they talked with him, so...
I can find out from what...
But we'll make it a matter of record.
All those taps on that OSM will be done at the charge OSM. Am I correct?
No, I think there's a connection fee for each one, so...
A tapping fee, they may have to pass a service charge, but I believe all the OSM projects we've done in the past, taps has been paid for by the OSM.
I haven't seen all the OSM projects, but...
I don't blame the traffic. I don't, if you tie it, you sign it up at first.
At first, and it was under that project.
If you get a discount, great, that's enough, it's not free.
Commissioner Oryx, you said you wanted to ask the motion maker?
The makers of the motion, I'd like to see if we can negotiate something else out. I mean, we need to, we need to go forward with this project. We've done tie a lot of time up in it, but I'm not happy with, and I'm sure nobody here is happy with it, but if they can negotiate something else without another landowner, that way we don't tie ourselves down to this landowner saying we're going to purchase his property. I think Ralph's motion was, if the project don't go forward, then we're not purchasing it. But if we have another option, I think it needs to be put in there.
I think it was Carl's motion. Carl, would you modify to seek another land parcel?
And if not, then you'll file back on what we've got originally done.
I'll make a motion, you know, if it can be worked out to purchase another piece of property, there, put that pumping station on.
Will you second Ralph? Okay, so the motion's modified to reflect that?
Negotiate it out, not the purchase, but to probably get somebody to donate the property in lieu of trying to purchase it, and if not, we can file back on after the purchase.
Save the money if we don't find nothing else.
Don't find nothing else, we've got to do what we've got to do.
All right, let's direct show those conditions are reflected in the motion and in the second. Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change the vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 14 yes. The only item I have left tonight is a recommendation to cancel the paving of the senior center parking lot, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to cancel the senior city parking lot until further notice.
There, a second? That was second by Commissioner Baird. Any discussion?
Let money go back into that capital project funding?
It's just an appropriation in there right now.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. I'm, I'm thinking something, doesn't matter. What happened, tell what we're doing here now, to say that we're not going to do it?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any other discussion?
Now, Mayor, was the wording suspend, the...
Cancel.
Might be something we can look at for next cycle. Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 10 yes. That's the last item I have. Commissioner Air? Commissioner Oryx?
You have two surplus vehicles correctioned. Do we need to do that, the surplus vehicles? It's another of the other matters that need to be corrected, the Vins.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion we correct the Vins on the 1995 white Ford Ranger and the 2000 Ford Explorer, or Expedition, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion to correct the Vins on the two vehicles. Second. Here, motion by Oryx, second by Nance. Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change the vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes.
Commissioner Baird?
Number five, I'm sorry.
Sorry, too. Before you move on to some other matters, the lease for kidney bones for the property assessor's office?
Number five on the list. I make a motion that we approve the property assessor's lease for the mail machine.
Motion to approve property assessor's lease, second by Goins. Any discussion? Please vote yes or no, press confirm. Does anyone wish to change the vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes, the lease is approved.
Yes, just for discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the oil and natural gas severance taxation that Ms. Davis had presented.
I'll second it.
Motion, second, discussion?
That is for natural gas and oil severance, right? It's not, I think there was some communication that got crossed up this past week about it being going on her fuel, at her fuel, at her gas pumps, but that's not the case. It's...
No.
Can you hear me? Somebody got it cross-threaded a little bit and thought it was going to be put at the pumps. And that's not going to be at the pumps. That's trying to draw a severance tax, and the lady did a great job. And I hope she goes further with it, and we try to push it through Nashville. But I just want to clarify that. I think somebody wrote something about it on one of the webpages, local channel. They thought it was on our gas pumps that we was charging, and we was going to adopt a 7-cent gas tax at the fuel pumps.
This resolution is to support the effort to ask the state legislature to move it from the 3% threshold to 7. It does not set a rate inside your county.
Severance tax of oil and natural gas, right?
Yes.
Correct.
This is to get Ken Yeager and Dennis Power to represent it in the state legislature.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's right.
How much money county going to get out of this?
I'm sorry?
How much money is the county going to get out of it? 7%?
Jeff, do you know what that revenue stream looks like?
You get 1/3 of the total present, and 3%, 2% is retained by the state, 1% comes back to county. And total resources for us, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, Mayor, I'm sorry. I just know we get 1/3 of the total present.
Was it anywhere near coal severance?
Oh, Lord, no.
On the order of 10% or so?
Yes.
Of the... In a good year, coal severance at a $350,000 clip, so in a good year, this would be $35,000, $40,000 worth of revenues to the county.
Max.
High Comal Road.
But this is a different production environment, a different resource environment now with availability, so natural gas is much more available.
Is your all's resolution going to try to address how the rate would be distributed? Like I said a second ago, the present 3% rate is distributed 2/3 to state, 1/3 to the county, which is severance. If it goes to 7, are you going to try to do 50-50, 2/3 to 1/3? What are you going to try to do?
Ms. Davis is here. If...
Ms. Davis?
Hi, Mayor, hi Commissioners. So the legislation, the bill that I've drafted, changes the distribution from 1/3 to the county to 100% to the county. So the revenue for the counties will multiply by 7. So whatever, if you're making a thou... Even if it's just for every $1,000 in severance tax revenue for oil and gas, that would be 7,000 with the enactment of this bill.
That seems like the ultimate negotiation position. You're asking for all of it.
Yeah.
So you can pack it down from there, so...
I was thinking the general...
In the world of negotiations, you've retained all your options. Any other discussion?
I had just a question. On this, it says specifying that the revenue from the tax increase returned to the district from which the resources were extracted. Are we going to leave it at district or county? You're talking about the state district? Is that how you're...
That is how the language of the bill is written right now, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Again, that's probably your most restrictive position to start with, so all options after that. Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no. Press confirm.
I don't know that Maria can second.
Well, I'll second if she didn't.
I did.
Commissioner Goins, second.
Mr. Davis.
Right. Who's second? Ralph Davis, second. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes.
The only other thing I had was regarding building codes, and I've gathered a lot of information. A meeting with several people from the state later on this month, so I'd reserve that. I'll put it back on next month if I see that there's enough information to do it. Meeting with several contractors as well. A lot of them don't want their names out, and I understand, so I'm just meeting with them to get their own information. But I would like to clarify, even though Cliff did at our workshop, that this is not dealing with zoning. I'm like Rusty, it got somewhere in the media that we're trying to put in zoning. We're not talking about zoning, just new construction building to ensure that you're getting what you should be getting: footers, framing, insulation, electrical, et cetera. So not zoning, building codes only. And if those bodies seize fit with the revenues that are being brought in from the building permits, if there's enough of them, and the county wants to hire someone, we don't... It was brought up, how are we going to pay for this position? If we do, the only way it will be done is self-funded. It'll have to be funded through the building permits that are being purchased by the people in the county. All I was trying to do is if there's enough building going on, instead of paying somebody that don't live in this county, I'd rather pay somebody that does live here, but we can subcontract it. I mean, we're a long ways from saying we're hiring anybody. So if you hear that out in the public, that's not true either, so just give me a call. Thank you all.
I will say, we're talking with business prospects, and they are asking what our zoning is, and they're shopping tens of millions of dollars.
Code, Mayor. You're done confusing them.
Yeah, we're done doing so.
But the shopping environment includes that discussion.
Yes, sir.
And every other community in Tennessee along I-75 has a very cohesive package when they describe their zone. Mr. Forster-Baird?
I want to call this building up on Cretches Creek Hollow for the ambulance service. This is going to be a temporary facility, so I want to make a motion that no change orders. My understanding is, it's been, you've got the bid. I want to make a motion, no change orders will be issued.
I'll second that motion.
They bid on it, let them do what they've got to do, but I don't want somebody to come in here and say, "Well, we need this," or "We should have done this." No change orders. Also, when that building is no longer used, it needs to be sold, and the starting bid on it will be whatever investment we've got. I'll put that in form of motion.
I'll second the motion. Motion is to accept no change order, and if and when sold, set the minimum price at the amount we've invested. Okay? And second by Jennings. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Douglas?
Jeff, what was the bid on that?
44.
Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no. Press confirm. So noted?
I object.
So noted.
Thank you. I love him, but I object.
Carl, please press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 13 yes.
You tricked me.
Commissioner Bruce, you had an item for budget funding?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting that instead of setting the budget finance being at 5:00 a morning, move that to 5:30, anyway, get a quick lunchtime to get here, and most time they look at the budget.
Is that in form of motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Here, second. Goins, any discussion?
Starting next month.
Starting in December.
And going forward.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no. Press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 15 yes. Commissioner Davis?
I'll mount my duck here.
Commissioner Goins?
I'm putting mine off next month.
Commissioner Davis?
I would like to... Anyone that these meetings we're having tomorrow, water lines, communications, if you need these services or know someone that does, please call them and tell them that they need to be here tomorrow. Or send us something with an address so we can help everybody. Anywhere in the county, not just the fifth district, but anywhere in the county. Thank you.
And with that comment, I'm looking to schedule meetings, community meetings out in the districts, but with the committee meetings, I mean, the calendar starts to get tough. So we'll be in every district every year, but I'm really pleased to see folks from every district here in the courtroom, and really glad to see you coming to the committee meetings, because that's when we hear your input. So please know that you're extremely welcome, and we will still seek opportunities to come out in the district as well. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes, Mayor. In my quest to try to help and start it a little bit in advance, we're going to be looking at, before we know it, the budget again. I've talked to a lot of people, and I have yet to find one person that tells me that this wouldn't be a good idea. I'd like to make the motion this evening that we cut the number of court members pending the next election, doesn't affect anybody here, that we cut the amount of board members to 10. The reason being, it will save thousands of dollars over a four-year period, and it's money that we need for other things. I think for years, this county operated fine with 10. As a matter of fact, at one time, they did pretty good with 7. But I don't think it hurts any district by doing that to limit us to 2 from each district, and I make that motion right now.
Motion, I'll entertain, second?
Second.
Second by Goins. Any discussion? Joe, we've talked about it before. There's some conditions that have to be set, but we changed from 10 to 15. Feasible to go from 15 to 10, under what conditions?
Remember, it has to be tied to year reapportionment. It's not something that could be done in the next cycle, but if you want to make a resolution, if you can provide to accomplish this somewhere down the road, then you're not going to be able to...
Well, where's some... When is somewhere?
I think it's...
Reapportionment, when the state legislature reapportion?
When they, yeah. It's a county that reapportion since 10 years. You have to have, follow the one man, one vote process, and then, you know, you have school board districts that are concurrent with the commission districts, and it can be done, but it has to be coordinated.
Okay. So it's tied to the census cycle?
Correct. Yes.
Which is when?
Commissioner Oark?
It would actually fall in the year 2020. It's every 10 years we have the reapportion, right?
I think I sent you all some information that was the same as we sent a few years ago, when the previous commission was, was looking to do the same thing, and they thought it was then, 2020 would be the first time that we had an opportunity to do this.
Commissioner Davis?
Well, I was reading up on it, unless I misunderstood it, it had to be done before this body's reelection, and it had to be done in time for the election committee to change the ballots and let the public know. So my understanding is, when our term is up, we could vote and cut it down to 2, 2 per district.
Commissioner Oark?
We went through this a couple of times, Joe, in the last couple of years. All the... There's, I know a maximum of 25, and some counties has 25. I couldn't imagine ours having 25, but...
We are the maximum.
We got more than Knoxville.
25 is the maximum. Williamson County, I know they have 25 commissioners by population.
And at least 21.
But I think there's a minimum also, the number of commissioners, and that falls in that category of the size and number of citizens, right? Do you know what that number would be? Well, we have more than Knoxville. Knoxville's is a full-time commission. We have more than they do. They get, make about $28,000 a year doing their job.
We're trying. We also operate as a different city.
With the intent at first opportunity to do it.
Well, I'd like to ask for the court to consider it. I just think it shows the public that we're trying to do something.
They're full-time paid, Jerry, not full-time workers.
Besides taking care of ourselves. I mean, seriously, if it don't work, I'll research it some more. I'm sure Mr. Davis will, and Joe can too, and if it passes, and we'll see if it'll hold up between now and the later.
Any other discussion?
If I'm right, if I regulate it right, that if you keep the number of districts the same that it was even, I think it's...
Drop it to 2, and you'd have an even vote. You could have tie votes a lot more regular than you have at 15.
I'll be there.
The mayor's type of...
Well, if it passes, you can do that. If it don't, don't worry about it.
Any other discussion? Please vote yes or no. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, 8 yes.
That's what it did a year ago.
Commissioner Kits?
Yes, Mayor. Actually, the Sofford Field project, I'd like to thank the commission for, you know, approving that project to move forward to Campbell County High School. And one more item was the website construction. I'd like to bring it up tomorrow night to Communication Committee, 6:15. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Oark?
I asked for the county mayor to put two resolutions together, one for Livestar for being here a year, and the other one is for Bert Loop, and I have no idea how many years Bert has served the county at the airport. And like I said, me and Bert didn't see eye to eye the first couple of years, but I've learned over the years, he's did a great job. But I'm going to do that in a form of motion, that we do those resolutions for Mr. Loop and for Livestar, and plaques will be presented Wednesday evening. Livestar is going to have like a year celebration, and hopefully, it's going to be at the Livestar and the airport. But that's my motion to approve the resolutions, Mr. Loops and Mr....
Have motion to honor Livestar's first year, Mr. Loop, and second by Kits. Discussion?
How long's the airport been here? That's how long Bert's been here.
That's how long Bert's been here since the beginning.
This conversation, the mayor and I had about a week or two ago. He said that's one, and you can confirm this, that's one department that he don't have to mess with a whole lot. It's pretty... And I hate to say this, because I don't want to kind of kill us, but it's probably a real well-oiled machine.
Well, you don't match any grants outside of the airport fund. That all comes from self-generated funds. You've got 18 new revenue drivers at 225 bucks a month, Mr. Marlowe, out there in the hangars that are going to belong to you in 10 years, and the Livestar building's going to belong to you in 10 years, and it's getting a fuel farm with it that's going to have jet fuel for the first time, Campbell County, which makes all helicopter traffic capable now. So it's a growing facility. It's revenue driver.
And I'm glad that Livestar's here, and I think most of the citizens are also. And back on Bert, me and him didn't, we didn't agree the first couple of years on some things, but he showed me tremendously, did a great job, and I kind of hate it when we name something. I'm not trying to name anything after Mr. Loop, but just to honor him. But it seems like when somebody passes away is when we try to think, well, they did a good service for us. And there's other people out there that did the county very well.
You're not wishing Bert...
You're not wishing Bert would die?
No, sir.
Bert would be with us for what?
No, sir.
You don't remember that you had to be there?
Yeah, but they named that ball field after him. He's still alive.
Well, in addition, I know the City of O'Fallon's working with T.D.O.T. to replace the bridge on Dossett Lane. So it will create an emergency bypass around our high school. It'll create an even more robust business district, better access for the airport and the businesses here in this end of O'Fallon and Jack'sboro. So any other discussion? Please vote yes or no. Press confirm.
And that is at 5:30 Wednesday at Livestar. So everybody's welcome at ten. It's open. Jeff Gregory, there's me and Gregory, we've got John Gregory, who's T.W.R.A., but Jeff Gregory is with Livestar. And Jeff said they'd have us a little get-together, and they want to do a celebration. They're glad to be here. But 5:30 Wednesday evening.
Rusty, press yes or no. Press confirm. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please show the vote. Motion passed, fifteen.
Hey, mayors, if I was going to run again, I'd get ahead of him. I'd make a motion, name the airport after me. No, it's a good job.
Toe String Road property. Mr. Orr.
That was, that's actually for, to be brought to the commission last week. I don't know if it's had time to go look at the property on Toe String that's being offered, the 27 acres for right at $70,000. It joins the animal shelter. Has anybody got a chance to review that? I'll try to think of anything that we could use it for. I mean, I'm still thinking it's still available, but I had some citizen bring it to me that has no ties to that. But do we need it? Because once it's gone, I don't think we'll get it for $70,000, 27 acres.
Commissioner Davis.
Is the road department or sanitation directors, have they looked at that? It joins them out there, don't it?
Mr. Dealbeck and the mayor met with me two Fridays ago when I first found out about it. And as far as a rock quarry, probably not. But Ron had a good idea, and also Walt, I think Walt may have done left, about if we did purchase it, maybe it'd be a good way to cut into the animal shelters where they'd have their own entrance and slow a lot of that traffic down. But think about it, I mean, he's still up for sale, you know, go out and look at it and walk over it. Paul Provan's told us that anytime we want to go look at it, just go look at it. Just be careful on it. But there's 27 acres there for 70,000, and just see if there's a need. I mean, somewhere down the road, 15 years from now, we might decide that we need a new place for the garage, and that may end up being part of the industrial park out there where it's at now, the county garage. I just can't grasp around a great need.
It's the backside of that lakefront.
It goes to the, it goes to the 1020, but it doesn't hold water but about 120 days a year. It's a long shot to water right now.
And it's got deer on it.
I know it does. I've hunted out there.
It joined the dog thing, don't it?
Okay, so nothing for motion?
It's nothing. I just want you to be aware of it, and I did what people asked me to do.
Bring us to the end of our agenda. I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Bruce, Goings, on favor? And you, Pete. Where's your...